Now call this City of Norco City Council Budget Workshop to order. The clerk will take the roll, please.
Councilmember Newton. Councilmember Huffman. Councilmember Bash. Mayor Pro Tem Hannah. Mayor Grunmeier.
Yes.
Thank you. All are present.
Thank you. At this time, we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Newton.
(Applause). (Inaudible).
So we have a couple -- well, we have one item on the agenda for today. So our city council business items will proceed in this manner. We will have a staff report and presentation, councils, questions of staff, any public speakers for, against, or neutral on the topic, and then it will come back to council for discussion and direction. So our agenda item today is continuation of the capital improvement program budget for fiscal years 2020 through 2024. And Gina, hello.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I will pass it on to Chad to begin the presentation for the CIP. I believe you have the clicker? Or is it Brian's turn?
So this is Fund 142. We kind of ended at this spot because of time. This was the EVP program. It's a carryover project, and then the fire station flooring. And then Station 57 improvements also include basically a replacement of the doors on the bay doors here. And this is an estimate we received. Obviously, we recently, I talked to Battalion Chief Lane, and we looked at another option as an alternative to this. That actual option came in a little higher than this. But again, our goal would be to work with the fire department on the specifications and standards, and then put this out to competitive bid.
Can we start with a question right there?
Sure.
Okay, so in this $120,000, that includes your roofing repair?
Nope.
That's just...
Bay doors.
Two bay doors?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so...
Bay doors, motors, all apparatus to that.
Correct. And meeting with the chief at Station 57, they have a bid for the two doors for $44,000. And I believe there was, oh, let's just say another $10,000 possibly for a new motor and the light curtains. So after discussions with Chief Lane, and so I went ahead and got another bid from another contractor, and it was $44,300. So the $44,000 seemed to be a legitimate bid for the replacement of those two doors.
And that included labor and prevailing wage?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And that's the bid that the fire department has, is $44,000.
These are the numbers I worked on with the fire department, so if we want to adjust it, I have no problem doing so.
Well, I'd like to adjust it, but also based on our conversations at Station 57, since those doors are 23 feet wide, if you go with the Porveen or Cooks in either one curtain door.
Right.
And we took a tour of Station 17, those sheik doors, those curtain doors are going to rattle dramatically. And part of our discussion was that you just replace the motor on the west door.
That's correct.
Those sectional doors that you have are pretty heavy duty. They don't blow in the wind. There's nothing actually wrong with them. That part of our discussion was spend $6,000 on the east door, upgrade the motor to a motor that is sized correctly, which is what you replace the west side motor with, and for all our fire stations, for both stations, enter into a preventive maintenance agreement that'll run $600 a year. That where they can, you know, grease the tracks, check the springs, oil what's necessary, and adjust the motors. So, you know, I'm sorry, Brian, just right out of the gate, it's like, why are we going to spend $120,000 where we could be much smarter and spend $6,000?
Are you saying don't replace the east door?
Do not replace the doors.
That's the door that tore out, and it's...
It was the motor that was replaced.
No, on the west side. But we, on the east door, we actually had a failure in fatigue in the metal. We had to come back and fabricate that back.
Yeah, all that fatigue...
Those doors need to be replaced.
Yeah, but the fatigue in that metal was just the arm bracket from the motor.
I think that's a horrible design for those fire doors. By the way, on those bay doors, there is no secondary way to open those up. If we can't get them open, then we hope the other door works so that that unit can back out or move forward.
Okay, well, then you make the argument for the sheik doors. Those are only $44,000.
For the curtain doors?
For the curtain doors. And then when the chief calls and says he can't sleep at night because the door's rattling and keeping them up, then...
Right now, we have the captain complaining because the door, the west side door rattles right now.
But all I'm saying is I looked what was fatigued, and that was just a simple mounting bracket. So that's all I have to say about that. Chief, did you want to weigh in on any of that right out of the gate?
I think too, we definitely want to do what is the best cost and the most efficient. I think we would all agree, and we can continue to sidebar, perhaps, you know, we could meet up and discuss it further. You know, we don't need to go spend the money until we know we were all on the same page. And that could take a little bit difference in philosophies in the doors, and I completely understand that. You can completely understand both discussions there, but the right price, most efficient, and operational need, I think we can get there and do the right thing.
I think the maintenance program you suggested is well worth it. And at $600, we can do that for $600 a year, I think is well worth it. They're so heavily used, the number of times those things go up and down, it's, I think that's money well spent for us, too.
You got your quote from for $120,000? I'd like to see that. Because like I said, the chief's quote was $44,000. Thank you.
So I guess I have a question. How, if there was to be an amendment to the $120,000, and let's say we take it down to $50,000 for a cushion, like, is that the process for today? Do we make a motion to amend, and then it's just corrected?
Yeah, we can make that adjustment, and then based on that, once we finalize the specifications with fire sending out to bid, then we bring those back.
And would one of those bids include the one that the chief already has in hand? Or does that person reapply for a bid? Or how does that...
Oh, no, they would have, it'd have to go out competitively.
Okay, so then that person just submits again?
And then it would be whatever vendor comes in as the low bid.
Okay.
We would specify the type of door that meets the needs, and then we would bid that.
Okay. So does that come at the conclusion of this? Any amendments come at the end of the report? I would assume when it comes back to council.
One of the difficulties finalizing a study session that the budget is to be adopted. But what I would suggest is for the finance director to keep track. If this is the only adjustment that you want to make to this category, we can make it now, and then those numbers, the numbers for this capital improvement program will change, and we will obviously recap that at the end when the budget is adopted.
Okay. Ted, did you have a comment or question?
I would hope that in all these bids and stuff that we're planning, that we're not expecting to spend the whole amount that we approved, and that we do best practices and go for the best cost effectiveness of this thing. Just because we're going to allocate $120,000 doesn't mean that staff can spend $120,000. We would expect that they would go out for the best price and maybe look at a half of that.
But what with the capital project, once we would go out to bid, you would award the contract based on this project element, and that's what would be awarded for the contract, plus possibly contingency?
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying.
If it's not spent, then it stays in the fund balance?
Well, I would understand that. It's just, it's one of those things, it's a frustrating part, because we're all dealing with budgets, and right now budgets are a big topic, and I don't want to belabor the thing. And we see it happen all the time up in Sacramento, we see it happen in big cities. You know, $36,000 for six units of Sharps containers, because that's what they want in downtown LA. Six containers, Sharps containers, $36,000. Give me a break. I'm going to buy them on eBay for 50 bucks apiece. That's what we're getting at, is that we have, this is the taxpayers' money, and we have to be cognizant of that, because if we set $120,000 like this, and Councilman Newton's right, let's get the best competitive bid on these things. Thank you.
One of the issues we are dealing with here is we're using the term bid very loosely here. None of this is a bid yet. The bids will be obtained, obviously, before a contract is awarded. I suppose what Brian is, has gathered is some cost estimate from a third party. We don't know what the bids will come in at until we lay out the specifications and actually put that specification out on the street for people to bid. We don't know what those bids are going to be. This is just a cost estimate so that we can have a number in the budget. So kind of want to, it would be good to clarify that so that we're not talking about quotes when we should actually be speaking about a cost estimate that is obtained in order to plus a number for the CIP budget.
Well, I guess my frustration comes in that if the cap's set, then that's the number they can go up to, and if we know that that's way out of the category, I think the cap needs to be brought down, because I can say, oh, well, I'm going to encumber $6,000 for an ice machine that should cost $2,500 or $3,000, and then what do you know, the invoice comes in at $5,800. So I don't want to give leeway for that kind of stuff to happen. And if my only tool to do so is to make sure that these numbers are in a reasonable ballpark, then that's my responsibility to do so.
And I agree with you, those numbers should be in a reasonable ballpark, even before
We have a transfer of general government projects at 291.
they go in the budget.
So that's where I'm at. Right.
So just to confirm, we'll reduce the Station 57 improvements from $120,000 to $50,000.
This is part of the City Hall Improvement Program and Security Program, which also has Measure R money request as well.
Can I speak up? Well, actually, it would be $54,600.
Trying to get to the next slides, because some of these we went through on the Measure
And just so we're clear on all this, just all the years that I've spent on the Park and Rec Commission, there will be times when you go out and the bid that you get will
This one kind of capitalizes the successor agency money that we're transferring. Last year, we previously talked about the city entrance landscaping at River Road is
be a lot different than what people say it's going to be. So I would suggest, let's put it at 60,000, so that Greg had said 54,000, because 44,000
$80,000, and then this would be the transfer, the $291,000, which would be used for City Hall improvements at the sheriff's station for security and City Hall, which includes
plus 10,000 plus the 600 for the preventative maintenance comes to 54,600.
the counter. The $80,000 was to add landscaping and primarily trees on River Road, this between Sundance
I would suggest make it 60,000.
The, just if I can, the preventive maintenance program would be part of the general fund budget. It would not be part of the capital budget. One, because it's an ongoing type of cost. and Corridon.
So, but still, 60,000, I think that gives you a buffer, and that includes your number,
This is something we talked about last year. I do want to say, though, that that would be something that would be, need to be discussed
I mean, within...
next fiscal year with the assessment district, which that area is, because they would need to increase their assessment to maintain those trees. So that would be something, as part of a Prop 218 hearing, we would need to talk to them, they would have to have some sort of increase in there. Again, this is what has previously been discussed. We held off on this until the development was done, and we had gone down the road a little bit on this.
Brian?
Yeah.
Before you get off that page, run by that, the security and stuff like that again. We've talked about City Hall.
Yeah, there's $291,000 that comes from this fund, and then there is, Measure R, I believe, has $210,000 identified to it. So this money would go towards the City Hall Sheriff's Station improvements for security, and would include the upgrade for cameras. It would also, the DVR, the server, all of those things would be part of our upgrades, particularly on the sheriff's side. And then on the City Hall side, this would include the design and counter improvements at City Hall.
All right. Explain the counter improvements, what we're going to do to protect the people up here at the counters, not in the sheriff's department, but the City Hall and the Parks Department and everything there. Explain that again.
So what this will do is we would be hiring an architect to come in and work with us to provide a customer-friendly counter that has a barrier of some sort, we haven't defined what that exactly is going to be, that would allow, reduce potential intrusion coming over the counter. It separates the employees from the people who come to the counter. It gives them that added protection. You're seeing this done in allotted public and government facilities all over the country now, and so this would be adding to that. It also would take where our cashier locations are and provide additional security in those locations. It also would be placing cameras in those locations.
But forget the cameras, they're not security. I mean, you could take your iPad and stand back there in that door and let the lieutenant put three rounds to it, it's not going to stop a bullet. I'm talking about, I still...
Whether it's going to be bulletproof glass or some other type of secure barrier, we haven't, we haven't gotten that far. We need to bring someone into design and work with us on that.
Well, that's something we need to do because of the way everything's going, and like I said, those commissions I'm on, they're all going to that. Everybody's behind locked doors and glass. It don't make any difference what the public thinks. It's to protect the employees. The banks have been doing it for years and years and years. Gas stations have been doing it for years. I just have a problem with not putting them behind a little bit stronger barrier than a bunch of cameras.
Yeah, when I say barrier, it's because we have not defined what that's going to be. That'll be, that'll come back as part of one of the architectural features, and once we do that, we can bring that back to council to show you what that'll look like, actually.
Yeah, well, I'm just trying to get a cost on it. I mean, when we asked you to do this here a while back, I figured we'd get the cost on total protection instead of just halfway doing something.
Yeah, some of our challenges are, do we go to the ceiling, which is a very tall ceiling, or do we go with a six foot or eight foot? So those are the things we need to look at and kind of get a feel for, because costs will change based on how high. If it's an eight foot or 10 foot, or if we go all the way to the ceiling, then that, obviously, we have very tall ceilings in that location, it would, changes the price. So that's what we want to work with an architect, so we can actually see what that visually will look like, and meet with the staff that work at those counters to kind of get a feel of what is going to work for them operationally as well. And this is the 141 Parks Development Fund. We are proposing to replace the gym floor. The gym floor is at 19 years of age. It has served really well in its, for us. It has actually lasted longer than what we were expecting it to. It is a synthetic floor. This particular floor, we would be replacing with an Alike-type floor. The technology is much, much more advanced now. It does come with a vapor barrier underneath it. And this would be, we, this last couple of years, we've had problems with bubbling and ripples, which is just a sign of really the age of the floor. And so we would be replacing it, and this would get us another 15 to 20 years out of the floor. Some people have asked, why not go to a wooden floor? For, to create, we looked at that originally years ago, and the cost for a wood floor, and then the ongoing maintenance of a wood floor is pretty expensive. And on this floor, they would be recommending to do some sort of a sleeper under it, one because of the moisture that's in that concrete area. The type of floor that we do, synthetic, the moisture barrier gives, protects our warranty, and it's part of the new flooring. The last time we did it, we actually had to bring a separate barrier in and then put the floor on it. So it's held up really well, except for the last couple of years, we've had some issues, and we've actually had to cut sections out and have it redone. So this would be putting in a new floor for the gymnasium.
Brian?
Mm-hmm.
Is the, is the floor bubbling because predominantly through the moisture coming up through the concrete slab, or is it also because the roof leaks?
No, it, it's just really the padding has started to break down. When we cut it open and you look at it, there's no moisture barrier left. And then two, the actual, it's starting to degrade. So it's back, basically, when you're looking at a piece of rubber, basically...
Sure.
It is slowly wearing itself down. And over the years, it's just deteriorated and degraded itself to a point where it is, it isn't. When we originally did it, we had moisture issues. It was more, Riley Gym sits in the lowest spot.
Right.
So we, when we first did it, we actually put a French drain around Riley Gym, and we have connect into the storm drain there. So that helped us a lot in reducing the moisture in that slab. The vapor barrier, which is another rubber barrier we put down, was to give us that added protection, and that has helped us along the way. It's just the last few years, and when you tear it open and you start looking at it, it's really that the rubber is degraded...
Got it.
...to a point.
Okay.
And what happens is it, for lack of a better word, it shifts. So as it starts to break down underneath, you're, as opposed to it being more firm, it starts to do this. That leads to potential injuries, so it's time. When we brought Terraflex out, who we spec, they were amazed that it's lasted as many years as it has. And so for all we did the last time, I think it served us well.
And we would coordinate this also with the roof repair of the building?
Yeah, that's coming up in the, in part of the Measure R. I'm doing most of all of the roofs out at one contract to get my best price. And so, and we would release those in the fall. The best time for the roofing for us and our section is in the fall, outside of when the school districts in the summer are redoing all of theirs. So that's when we would release our bid.
Okay, thank you.
Ingalls Park Event Center improvements. There are two areas here. One is the 156-465, and then the other section is $83,000. These are carryovers that are part of the budget. Our Ingalls Park Development Committee looked at this, and we set up some priorities, mainly because, obviously, there's a lot of things we could do up there, but there are some real key issues that the committee felt were important. One, we have some drainage issues on Marino Arena and around Nellie Weaver Hall. There's a little bit of some issues that we need to do related to Clark Arena as well. One of our problems is the water we collect. In a, in a light storm, isn't a problem, but in heavy storms, the downspouts actually overrun, and the, the water actually shoots back up out of those drains, and then we flood out the arena and the back pens. So we're going to look at how we can maybe mitigate that, whether we run another line. We'll have to look at some engineering on this, and it's really to improve it. The other side of Nellie Weaver Hall, which is the east side, we have some issues with drainage and natural springs that percolate out of the east slope off of Nellie Weaver Hall. This would look at what we would need to do to mitigate that, catch that, put it in a drain, and put it in the culvert that is just to the south of Nellie Weaver Hall. The Ingalls, the Promiter Park Improvement, this $48,000, this is from the cell sites as part of their public improvement funding that they did for that park. We would be looking at redoing the infield and outfield and giving that facility a facelift. We also would be replacing a few of our fixtures and upgrading that to the muskle lighting, which would match the new muskle lighting that we're receiving on two of those poles. This, by doing this, this facility becomes a very great field for, particularly for girls' softball. And we have our travel programs, including the high school that would have interest in seeing this being used or being improved upon, as well as our Norco Girls Softball Association, particularly in the offseason. This field really just needs that attention. It's been around for a long time. This type of facelift would give us both infield and outfield facelift. Just to note, we do have drainage issues there, but Chad is doing a public works project along there that will catch all of the drainage water and take it somewhere else for us, so we're really happy about that.
Can I ask...
So the infield will no longer flood out, we hope.
I just have a question. By the way, I played Little League on that field. It was their opening day, how about that? The pole barns at Ingalls Park, what, where are we at with those?
It's not on here. It's actually identified, our committee talked about this, too, to start really working on it. I've actually identified design and money going into next year's Measure R funding.
You mean getting rid of the pole barns and then building new ones?
Yes, that would be the long-term plan. We would work with our community groups. There's a lot of ideas passed along. It's not a real cheap fix, so it's really trying to look at what is, what do we really want to see the, and end in mind there, and then trying to design to that. We're looking at about 25,000 square feet total, if you were to count the floor space on all of those pole barns. So it's pretty good size, so how we do it is something we're going to have to collectively work on and start to look at. The subcommittee has, it's on their list. We had a discussion on this at our last meeting, and it is something. When I last had it looked at, we had about a seven-year span, so we're on the five-year downward spiral to do something with it. So for taking a look at that and forecasting it, putting money in design, and then, a lot depends on what they want in the end. Do we do a fully enclosed facility or just more of a cover-type facility? How are we going to get best use out of that? Those are part of the discussions we're going to be having with the community, our commissions, and our subcommittee.
Thank you.
I think I completed all of my CIPs, and I'll turn this over to Chad. And if I missed something, do I have one more? Oh, I'm sorry. I don't know why that didn't come up, but I have animal control. The project for animal control is... It's not a real cheap fix, so it's really trying to look at what is, what do we really want to see the, and end in mind there, and then trying to design to that. We're looking at about 25,000 square feet total, if you were to count the floor space on all of those pole barns. So, it's pretty good size. So, how we do it is something we're going to have to collectively work on and start to look at. The subcommittee has, it's, it's on their list. We had a discussion on this at our last meeting, and it is something. When I last had it looked at, we had about a seven-year span, so we're on the five-year downward spiral to do something with it. So, so for taking a look at that and forecasting it, putting money in design, and then, a lot depends on what they want in the end. Do we do a fully enclosed facility, or just more of a cover-type facility? How are we going to get best use out of that? Those are part of the discussions that we're going to be having with the, the community, our commissions, and our subcommittee.
Thank you.
I think I completed all of my CIPs, and I'll turn this over to Chad. And if I missed something, do I have one more? Oh, I'm sorry. I don't know why that didn't come up, but I have animal control. The project for animal control is, my apologies for not catching it faster than that. The project for animal control is basically putting a shade cover, similar to what we've looked at with Little League. This has been a project that has been discussed for a long time. We have donation money, and we are putting some improvement money. Animal Control has collected and does collect a DIF fund. It doesn't collect a lot, however, or has over the time, but it, yeah, here it is. So, what we would be doing is, you would see from impact fees, about 29, 35, transfer from the general fund. This is our donation fund of about 15,408. And this, the, and this would, is our estimate of about $32,000, and that would include the engineering on that structure as well. And this would create, our adoption area, which is on the north side of Animal Control, is out in the shade. It just creates a more friendly area for us to create adoptions, for families to meet and greet the dog that they are looking at adopting, or perhaps the cat. And so, this area would be shaded. We've had people make donations over the past to do improvements there, and this would be coming from that fund account.
Brian, are those donations the ones we get from Horse Week, or that?
Horse Week and others, and we actually had a scout who did a project up there and then donated the rest of their scout money.
But I know when Tony comes in and they dump a big check in there, is that those funds, or is that-
Part of that is in there, yes.
Okay.
That concludes, and then I'll get over to Chad.
I'm good, Brian. I got, I got a computer. Thank you. All right, so the first slide we'll discuss is the Storm Drain Fund project. As you know, predominantly, most of the work that we fortunately get done within the city of managing our storm drain system is provided by Flood Control, and we've certainly ended up on that offer and built quite a few systems in the last three years. Going through the projects themselves, we at times need minor drain storage improvement projects. We always put a small amount, that's general funded, funded. That's not from, from Flood Control. That's one of the few items that we actually fund directly. But, because sometimes project comes up from Flood Control or from residential issues that we want to address, and we'll use that, those funds potentially to do things. We've rarely, honestly, really had to use it on a year-to-year basis, but we keep it there as a placeholder to do that work if we need to. The next two items are ones we just recently added in because we got permission from Flood Control. They're smaller projects, and basically what this is, is design of, of one project and a redesign. There's two areas where Norco High School is that it gets flooding. There is a storm drain in front of Norco High School on Temescal, but it's currently crushed in a couple of different places, and it ends up going to the, it's supposed to go to the flood channel, they call the South Norco Channel. But, what we convinced Flood Control to do is if we come up with a new design to replace it, would they replace it in their about-to-start South Norco Channel project? And they said, yes, we just have to pay to get it designed. They'll include it as a change order with their contractor, and they'll put that in. Because we already have the easement floor going through the properties to take it to there, we're just basically taking the old out, putting the new in. We just have to do a quick design on that. So, we put, add the money in. That's going to be general fund money to do that. They're not covering that design, but it's minor. We've already gotten the quotes as far as what it would take to, to do that design. And then, there's another problem behind the high school, whether water's coming through in the back portion of the high school from the north and kind of flooding out the field areas, et cetera, and we want to grab the pipe, or some of that water from that area and take it to the South Norco Channel to remove some of that water. Again, it's a minor design project, which we have to fund, but they will do the actual improvements, again, as a change order to the overall South Norco Channel project. So, if we quickly get it started and get design to them before they get too far in the project, actual construction, they can include it as a change order to help mitigate some problems that the schools is being impacted with. So, we added those two in. But I just want to make sure you knew that those two particular ones are being funded by the city to do, but it's just the design. They will do all the construction, everything. Then we usually keep a placeholder for relocating utilities from time to time, as far as, then they do certain storm drain projects. Flood Control will find an unknown utility that's ours, you know, a water line that we have to adjust, and we pay those costs. So, we just, it's a minor line item that we keep there. The major projects, some of these are existing that are just carryovers. Some are just about to finish, but it will carry over the next year. But we have Crestview Drive, Arlington, that one is basically finished design, and we're going to go out fairly soon. And that basically is grabbing the water from Eighth on Crestview, and that goes all the way down to Arlington. We're going to capture that water, keep it underground, and take it across the street to the existing open channel that's on the other side near the nursery. But that's basically finished. We're going to about, go out to bid for that. The lateral in Pedley Avenue from, from Riverview Elementary School, that's basically going from Seventh Street all the way to the end to, well, let me apologize. We're capturing the water just south of the elementary school, and, because we get a lot of flooding in that area, and we're going to take it south towards the existing drainage system. Part of that we'll include later on, what we're talking about is actually repaving that whole road to, between Seventh, all the way to the river. So, we're going to do the storm drain, get it all done, and then do some roadway improvements to get that road all finished. That one has actually already been awarded, and the contractor is expected to start maybe, maybe by the end of this month, but that's our, that project's already moving forward. This is a new project, which is NA6, which is on Fifth Street. We have two locations along Fifth Street where we get a lot of flooding. One is near Fifth and Temescal, and the other is basically between Corona and Sierra. We get flooding on both areas. So, it's trying to grab water in different locations and basically take it down to the existing system that exists near the, the 15 freeway. So, it's just grabbing water along that whole stretch in different ways, and then taking it, and getting it out of that area. So, those are two projects we're going to do and design, and hopefully get under construction this next year. The Pedley, the N1-C, Pedley to Green Tree, that's basically already finished. There's minor work that still needs to be done, striping, et cetera, some improvements on, on the project that we think may end up being carried over the next year, so we just carried a little bit of money over, but it's basically the project's finished. The N4 Extension, which is Fourth Street, that one's currently under design. That's where we're trying to grab water halfway between Fourth and Third. There's a low point there that impacts a couple homes in that area, and then we're going to take it down towards Third. And then, that's currently in design. We're starting to review the first submittals from the contractor, from the design engineer on that. And then, we have Valley View, sorry, I think I was mistaken here. N4 is Fourth Street. I'm sorry, I was describing Valley View. That's N5, that's where we're grabbing that water. N4, I got to remind myself, I'll go back to that one a second, sorry, I'm, I'm drawing a blank. Line ND, which is California and Crestview, that work is currently in construction. Hopefully, it will be done soon, but it's likely to carry over into the new fiscal year, so we've, we've left the funding there, but it's basically, most of the project's been done. We just haven't received many of the invoices.
Chad, on that one?
Mm-hmm.
Is that the one that cleans the drain up from Crestview down to California, so we don't have the open ditch on the Snow's property anymore?
No, no, that's the one that Flood Control's doing on their own.
Okay.
That's NA1-1.
Okay.
And that's not in ours, because they're funding and building that.
All right.
Yeah. This is down on California, basically more to the north. Trying to collect some of that water that does get through, through some of those existing open channels, and trying to grab some of that water. That's on, on California.
So, we're going to, County Flood Control's taking care of the Snow's property?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
And that project's, for the most part, it's been finished. They're just doing the paving. They've done all the infrastructure as far as the storm drain. Now, they're just trying to finish off the paving.
All right.
So, we have S2, which is basically from Second Street, from Corona to Hillside. Get a lot of flooding in that area, especially the water ends up going on Temescal, flooding a couple, some people there. It makes that turn towards the high school, so we're grabbing some of that water through that section there. That's currently in design, getting close to being finished with the design. So, we are pretty confident we can get it started in construction in the new fiscal year. Promiter Park, the one Brian mentioned earlier, again, that's grabbing some of that flooding that occurs at the, at the base of the, front of the park, taking that water towards Temescal. We're pumping it basically over the hill to get it out of that area. That design is nearly done. And then, the South Norco Channel is a brand-new project we're, we're looking at doing. It's a major project, as far as the second half of South Norco Channel, which is from the Hamner Avenue all the way south until it reaches the City of Corona's boundaries. There are several areas in there where the open channel, current open channel needs to be deepened, basically what they're doing to the South Norco Channel project on the east side of the freeway. There's also other areas where we, potential to underground the piping, which would help benefit some of the property owners that currently have the water flow, surface flow through the back of their properties. So, we're really interested in that, that'll benefit about seven or eight homes. We still have to talk to property owners, see if they're interested, et cetera, but I did the work to talk to Flood Control. They're willing to fund that project, which is likely to be several million dollars. And we've already engaged one of Flood Control's pre-approved design engineers, which is our, one of our already pre-approved design engineers, that they're comfortable with, and they're currently reviewing that proposal to do that design work right now to give us some feedback. So, we've tentatively budgeted just the engineering at this time, and then, because we imagine the engineering alone would be about a year of design, so we weren't even going to come, we'll come back later on with actual construction costs. But they'll fund the whole project. And then, we have some basic catch basin screens that we need to do as part of the new state requirements for NPDS. You have to start putting in a certain percentage of catch screens inside your catch basins to capture material, and that's part of our process. It's the carrier project, we just didn't get a chance to start it yet. We have five years to show a certain percentage of increase in those catch screens. So, this year, we're going to try to make an effort of putting some sample catch screens in, see if it works, what doesn't, talk with their agencies, what they've done, because some of the agencies have already started on this, so we get some benefit of their experiences, et cetera. But this, we'll start in this process to, to get us in compliance, to show the state that we've met some of those requirements, and getting a certain number of catch screens into our basins. And that's our goals. Any questions, any particular project, or? Go to SB1. So, as you know, we get funding from SB1 from, which is the, the gas tax. So, we did finish one project last year, so as you're aware of, which was the River Road. That was our 17, 18 allocation that we got. And then, for this year's project, we, we didn't spend the money, but I have projects here that will definitely spend that money, and this year's money that we're getting for this next year, so we'll, we'll be in full compliance. So, basically, we're doing Hamner Avenue. I have two carrier projects, which is the continued work on doing the, the right-hand turn pocket at Second Street at the I-15, and Sixth Street at the I-15. We put a small amount of money in there just as a placeholder. We're really focusing on the other two projects, which is Hamner Avenue, Third Street to Hidden Valley, repaving that whole remainder of Hamner Avenue and getting that road now fully complete. And then, Pedley Avenue, Seventh Street to the Riverbed, that is the joint project where once we put the storm drain in, we'll get the road all resurfaced. So, we easily have two projects that will definitely get done this year, and all the SB1 money will be accounted for and will be caught up.
Chad? Let's just say, like, on the Pedley Avenue project, when, so we have, with this rehab and overlay, does that include any horse trail fencing?
Not in that project, but it's a, it's part of our recommended areas to put trail fencing in, as far as the trail fund project.
Okay.
But we didn't put it in this project with this specifically. It's a, a separate project by itself as a whole, as we do all the trail fencing.
Okay. Well, let me just throw this out, maybe not then to this specific one, but could, could we please, when we have a project like this coming up that is going to include, like, new white vinyl fencing, that maybe we give our volunteers a chance to go in there and cherry pick some of the old wood railing and posts beforehand, so that way we can kind of build up our inventory for when the volunteers, you know, replace wood fencing and things like that.
I think what we'd end up doing, because we've had experience in the past, is we'll probably just be doing a separate type of bid to any of these trail fencing projects, because we usually get better pricing. As you pointed out, when we include these in individual projects, the pricing's not so good.
Correct.
And when we do those projects, we will probably continue what we've done before, is do removals internally using our Core Crews or CRC, I'm sorry, Cal Fire Crews. And what we'll do is, when we pull those materials, because we have to dispose of them, we'll make them available for those groups to come pick through the piles, and that way they're not having to try to figure out what, what's good and dig it up themselves.
Okay. Well, maybe that approach is better, because I'll agree with you, when the street contractor does it, that, that price goes-
Right.
Yeah. Good. Okay. Thank you.
I'll go on to the next one, which is Measure A. So, on Measure A, even though we list a lot of, again, the five-year future where we might spend money, there's really only two projects with the, with the Measure A money that we're going to be spending. The first one is Crestview Avenue. Again, it's moving forward and trying to finish the rest of Crestview paving-wise, because we're going to finish a portion of the paving between Sixth and Seventh as part of the NA1-storm drain project that Flood Control is doing. We put in money to kind of pave, not to kind of pave, we to pave from Sixth Street to Seventh Street, get that section done. Now, we want to finish that road, because the remainder of it is not good, and that goes from, and even it says Sixth Street to North Street, that's because some of the money that we will expend is coming out of this, which will pay Flood Control for that piece. We already have that cost, and then the remainder will be used to pave the rest of Crestview. So, it does include that whole stretch, but it's two separate projects. One's underway, and one that we're going to finish. That design is almost done, it's, and it's going to be ready to go out to bid very soon to do the street improvements. We've just got a little bit of extra work to do of potholing, but we're going to go out pretty soon. But it is that whole section. And then, the other project is Sierra Avenue, Sixth Street to Detroit. That's the street that I selected because it's a heavily trafficked road, and it's incomplete. There's three homes at the end where the curb and gutter didn't get included in, in that track project when it came in. So, we're looking to finish that side, and there's one, two houses at the, on the west side also that don't have curb and gutter. We'd like to finish off that road, put the curb and gutter in, clean it up, certainly repave the road itself, because it's under poor condition. Probably going to end up doing, we're trying to decide now whether we're going to go all the way through Sixth Street, so we get the intersection done, because it's pretty poor in the intersection, but especially on the cross gutters. But it depends on how much the cost comes out to be, but our focus is between Sierra to, on Sierra from Sixth to Detroit, and that's one of the, one of the things we'd like to try to get done.
Chad, Norconian Drive. I thought that we were supposed to, was it pushed to 2021, or was it supposed to be 1920?
Originally, we had, were planning to, a year ago, was planning to bring this back at this time for this next fiscal year, but additional information has come up in that it, I think it provides a prudent to make it wait another year until, there's a potential project that really-
Right.
...could impact Norconian, i.e. paying for a good portion of those improvements.
Right.
And I would hate to repave the road and miss out on the opportunity for somebody to financially improve that road and take the cost, rather than the city pay for it and the money go somewhere else.
Yeah.
And my understanding is that project is to the point where it's legitimately a potential project that will come forward in the near future, to where we're not thinking it's a five-year window thing and nothing will ever get done. I just want to make sure I'm prudently giving you all the information of why maybe we should wait versus doing something, but that was the only reason I pushed it another year. And, you know, and the other thing, candidly, it's, staff's view is it's not a heavily traffic street. I know it is a cut-through area and people do use it, but in relation to some of the other streets that we, we have urgent needs on, that wasn't one of the ones.
I tell you, that, that's the road I hear about the most, and, and I totally get about the project, I understand. So, maybe, Andy, in the next, you can maybe let us know what that project is, where it's at, because I've been there now with two projects that, that didn't come through.
One of the reasons you-
Yeah.
requirement for a property owner to the west side also to contribute towards road improvements, and we are still negotiating with them in terms of determining what their responsibility towards that is going to be.
Are you talking about the church?
Yes. So, all of these needs to be hashed out before we, we can get some clarity in terms of the timing for doing this project, so that's, that's why we're-
All right. I mean, that's a good reason. I just want to make sure if that's the case, we have to get it out there, because it is the one I hear about the most, and I like your explanation. If somehow we can make sure people understand that there's a way for the taxpayer not to pay for it, and by delaying it, we may get a developer to come in who will take care of a good- in who will take care of a good portion of it and save a lot of money.
Yeah.
Did I say that correctly? Yeah, okay.
Kevin, I'm gonna agree with you on that, because even though we, we do hear about it, Norconian Drive, and yes, it is a cut-through, but when you think about all what's going on on Fifth Street, and along with the new development there, if it takes some pressure off of Hamner between Fifth and Sixth Street, it would be a blessing, so I would like to make sure that that is heavily prioritized, and to see where so-called, whatever happens, it stays there for the 2021, we need to get it fixed. Thank you.
Storm drain project associated with Norconian Drive also?
We looked at, one of the many things we asked, I asked more time for initially, because I was looking at potential water line project, a potential recycle water line there, whether a storm drain project would be viable and be helpful through that area. The water line's not an issue, the recycle water certainly's not an issue, we looked at whether a, it's really only capturing water from the hillside, and if a development came in, they'd capture all that water.
Okay, right.
So, we would, if, let's say if no development occurs, and we're just gonna move forward doing the road, we would look at reconstructing the underdrain that's currently there and not very functional, to try to capture that water, to take it down the course it should go, so it doesn't flood out on a routine basis.
But, nothing with the county?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Chad, and I, I'm gonna jump on Newton's thing, did we ever find out what that drain was, it's already there behind the church, and where that went?
Are you talking to one that's to the, I'm trying to say, southwest corner of the property?
That would be correct.
Yeah, that's part of the underdrain that's, that's on the other side of Norconian, which you can't find, so it's been buried, and it's supposed to take water from the other side of the road across, and the discharge on that side of the property, and go through the property.
Because I recall, two years ago, we looked at, we found it there, because it rained and washed it out, and there, there it was, there like a basin that was down there, and it looked like it had a concrete cap on, and no one could tell me where it went, or where the water goes.
And that's where, and get staff looked at that, and my understanding is that it was an underdrain that goes under the road, meant to grab the water from the low point, take it to the other side, but my understanding is, over the years, it's been backfilled on both sides, so that it won't be a problem for the property owner.
We may want to check somewhere to see where that drain actually goes.
Yes, and that's the whole point, if we really want to fix that whole issue overall. There's no other questions on those items, we'll go to trail improvements. Okay, so, we updated this slide, previously, it just indicated various locations, we did meet with the Street Trails Use Commission, I think I'd previously given you kind of the list showing what we talked about, we developed two different lists, we find it's far more usable to have the primary list, things we'd like to achieve, and have secondary lists if we have to shift, because, like, we learned this last year on Stetson, there are utilities in the way, and we couldn't put the trail fencing in as we planned to with the contractor, because it was all hand digging, and they weren't about to do that. But, we just shifted, did some other areas, so we're, we're creating a list of primary and then secondary projects. We don't have specific cost for each section of roadway that we've identified here, I've simply looked at the overall linear footage between all these roadways, and guessed, and basically off of that, we determined that the total amount that we're planning to ask for, the $150,000 plus the Measure R money, which is different discussion, will give us enough money to do the roads we have listed here to add vinyl fencing. And the reason these particular ones were chosen is, and I encouraged into the commission, is that these are roads that we've already finished as far as paving, so our goal is, let's finish the trail, let's go through, do any clearing grubbing we need to do on the trail, take out the old fencing, level it off, compact it, and then put the nice white vinyl fencing in, so we have a complete, nice new road. Let's not jump around to roads that really, they're trails that don't have the road that's eventually gonna need to improve, let's clean up those roads that have a finished product. So, this will get us caught up to the roads that we just recently finished, or are finishing now, and then, we'll continue that pattern for the next roads that we do on this next budget year, but we already have a list of other secondary ones that aren't necessarily getting any road improvements, they would, the commission would like to see if money becomes available. But, this at least takes care of a lot of those roads we spent time and money on, to make nice and finish the trail, I think would really make it look sharp. So, that was our motivation of how we selected these particular streets.
On your selection of streets, Kevin, when did they repave and fix the flood control channel in front of your house?
Two thousand...
Nine, it's been, but it's nine years old. And I'm always saying this, because when you look at the improvements on a street, most of that wooden rail was replaced on your side there and fixed, but if you look, well, if you look at it today, it looks like that thing is a disaster, and here's my point, the easement on the other side and the spacing on that trail fence, it's too close to the road, for one, but the other problem is, and this goes back to, I guess we have to do some parking enforcement, is people that park perpendicular there and back into that trail fence, we need to start looking at the easement in our space, how much are we gonna give? If you look at the east side easement of that, and I'm just, I'm making this suggestion, when you pick these streets out, that how do we preserve the fence that we put in? And his street, and the one that runs along Pedley, because that storm drain, they replace a lot of it, but unfortunately, because it's too close to the road, a lot of it gets hit. And that, and because we allow people to park perpendicular in that area, because the easement is so far, if you look at where they put the storm drain, it's at least, it's car width, you can, I mean, not even width, I mean length, at 15, 20 feet, and these people using that area just to perpendicular parking, it's not just that, I just know that street, they're backing into the fence, so when we look at this, let's look at...
They said they aren't.
Huh?
They said they aren't.
They're not backing into your fence? Yeah, okay.
I have to be quiet.
Yeah. My point is, let's look at these streets, not just the fence, but let's look at how the traffic is going, and the protection of this fence, and if it's, because of, we're allowing things to happen, driving habits, bad driving habits, maybe we need to look at how much easement property we have, when we say replacement, maybe the...
And we could certainly look and work with law enforcement, determine whether, what our options are as far as restricting the type of parking, whether or not it, I honestly don't know whether you can restrict whether somebody parks perpendicular versus parallel, if we can say parallel parking only, only, those types of things certainly would help, and we could put up the signage that resolves that.
Well, I don't, I don't think it's legal to park perpendicular to the street.
Yeah, I don't know. It's, I've never had proposed that question as far as in relation to the impacts of it, because people backing up, you know, into the trail fencing.
But, because of that area, because when we put the storm drain in, we made it easier for them to do that, and, I mean, you know, you've been here long enough, the folks are parking on our easements and taking over our easements, putting fences in their own landscaping in the easement, and those are problems that we need to adjust, but that area in particular has gotten bad, and it's not just there, I just know it because, but the one on, that was it, Fifth and Temescal?
Temescal, same way.
They park, they park perpendicular, and they keep backing into the stuff, so when you go and replace these fences, just don't look at, okay, street, let's look at traffic patterns, and what's going on to those fences, that's just my point.
And we do, and for example, on Pedley, in front of the, in the Riverview School, elementary, we're actually shifting the parking, so it's not on the east side anymore, or west, east side, east side of the road anymore, it's on the west side, so we're widening a little bit, taking out the, some of the existing curb on the school side, so people park there, we're gonna shift the roadway, so there's more space on that side, and there's gonna be no parking at all in front of the new trail fencing that is gonna be in front of the school or along there, because it just keeps getting hit, so that whole section, we're simply gonna say no parking, so we've, we're aware of those kind of situations, but that's something I wasn't aware of as far as how they were doing the constant backing up, I think maybe Kevin had mentioned to me one time before, describing his frustration of the fences always getting knocked down, but, but we already do try to look at, so I appreciate the feedback, that's another area we should look at, and how we can maybe increase the life of our, our hard work.
Ted, are you referring also to where, let's say, we have the street, and then the storm drain is set back like 10 feet, and then there's a paved area to channel to the storm drain?
Yeah, they're using that for parking.
Lieutenant's gonna love this one, we have bobs, remember when we did that storm drain there on Corona Avenue? The drug house right there, I thought that was their private parking stall, he parks right off Corona Avenue, right in front of that storm drain, and then they go in and out of the house and they leave. So, we have the same situation on, off of Corona. You've been there. I think we should put signage there, just no parking.
I don't know, something else to look at and talk about, I'm not sure.
I'll have you come by, you can see it.
This might be, I don't want to belabor the topic, but this might be something that Public Works, Admin, and the Sheriff's Department can look at, as far as I know, there is no perpendicular parking, but without, in our, specifically in our code, we need to look at it and address it, because I think that is part of our problem, as we get more and more people, especially with our deep lots, and they're narrow, is that folks will take any advantage possible to park, and, you know, that's, let's face it, it's right down the corner, is it, I keep saying it's Fifth and Temescal, in front of that little house with the, I'm trying to think what it is, the dinosaur, I mean, there's all these, perpendicular park all over, and they take up a lot of space, but what I'm getting at is, it's destroying the fence, so if you could just get together in one of your meetings and put your heads together.
Sure.
Come up with something we can support.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll go into water improvements. So, there's a lot of activity planned for this next fiscal year, and it assumes obtaining bond revenues to do multiple projects that are necessary in the city and critical, but I'll go through those projects real quick. So, it includes repairing the water line that's on Chestnut, that Chestnut blew up twice on us right after we paved it, so that's an old pipeline that we need to replace. Smaller projects can continue replacing old outdated hydrants, we're still always updating the GIS and the Asset Management System, the, looking at a new water line as far as over the Hamner Avenue Bridge, and that is basically initially just a part of the, I put 50,000, but that's really the second year, and it likely is gonna get pushed until they actually bill us, which is probably not gonna be until 2022, 23, this is for the new water line that we're having, that's gonna be through the new Hamner Bridge, so we've just placed marks, some dollars there, but likely, it's gonna get pushed each year until, we just haven't been told yet when they might actually start billing us during the project, they're not gonna start construction until 2021, the end of '21, '22, so, but this is a place marked to kind of let you know, big dollar items that we have coming that need to be, we need to make sure we have money there for. And we have Hillside Avenue Water Line Project, that's not until next year, but it's a critical one, in that I can't, one of the, Hillside Avenue itself is a road I really want to repave through a section, but the water line is so shallow that will literally hit all the services, once we go down 12 inches, it's that bad, so I can't do the street until I do this, so it's, I have to do one before the other, so this is a critical one, again, it's not till the future year, and it will be dependent on, on money's overall available, but I just want to give you an idea, that is a, a project that's coming forward and in the near future. The biggest one for us, I'm sorry?
It's...
Yes, that's very old.
It's like from the, just after '46, is, could it be that old?
I'm not sure, I wasn't there.
Oh, shut up.
Our biggest project, certainly by far, that we have planned, is trying to move forward with our new reservoir and booster station, it's currently in the redesign, it's, we've gotten the first draft of that, we're currently reviewing that, certainly, the engineer's estimates come down a lot lower with our revisions that we've done, so we do feel confident that'll be a project that will move forward, so we'll hopefully go back in the near, in the future to get that out back to bid, but that is our line item, and I'm hoping we're well below that $5 million mark, but that's just my safety valve, I'm really gearing and hoping for that $4 million sweet spot to really get everything we need. Worst-case scenario, I simply go with one reservoir, one booster station, move on, and it gets done no matter what, but we need to get it done, it's a, it's a companion project that's going with our treatment plant that we're currently working on right now. The next other big major project is, again, storage, it's our reservoir number one, that one has already been designed, it's been designed for two years, we had to shelve it because of lack of dollars, we already do have the engineer's estimate, it's $4 million, likely, we'll do some revisions to that project before we ever go out, similar to what we're doing with the reservoir project we just did, so we have companion, comparison reservoirs that get some benefit of cost savings that we designed in this reservoir eight and nine, so that number hopefully, again, will come down or be within that number, and it'll be good, but that's, reservoir number one is up off of, it's Hill, it's Hillside and El Paso, it's up on that hill, it's basically increasing the reservoir from a 2 million-gallon to a 3 million-gallon reservoir to get more capacity, it's a very old reservoir, it's leaching water as we speak, nothing significant, but it's just, it's just old, it's concrete, it needs, and it's already, it's already gone, it's passed its useful life, so that's definitely an important one we want to do. A future one, again, with bond money, is reservoir number two, it is the same sister reservoir, it's already got problems, we've already replaced, it's vent before, completely corroded out, we just sent you a report that the hatch completely corroded out, and we're having to replace that, but again, that's a project that is desirable to do, but it doesn't mean those funds will go to that, we're just kind of highlighting where we're at, we're focused on the year-one projects. Then we have, again, continued scatic improvements, South Norco Channel, Third Street Water Line Relocations, these have been on here for several years, because this is related to the South Norco Storm Drain Project that the Flood Control is gonna do at some point when they move forward, we have to do some water relocations, and this is basically holding that money there to do those relocations with the help of a contractor, it's just been several years this has been on there. And then, we always keep an eye on a certain amount of money for unspecified water line projects, a lot of times goes for design, for stuff we've now realized we need to do or replace emergency replacements, such as this, what we had to do on Crestview, this is the type where that money gets used when we need those emergency work done. And we always have plenty of valve installations, we have a lot of old valves, we allocate $100,000 for that, and then, we have continuation item, which is the water treatment plant upgrade, which is $2 million, and that is expected to be done by September, and is moving forward fairly well, and then, we have a continuation item where we well rehab on well 12, 14, and 15, we're gonna be certainly looking right now, especially with the treatment plant being ready, is doing some minor rehab and improvements on some of our wells that are gonna deliver water through that treatment plant, so we're up and ready to go when that treatment plant is ready. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
California to Crestview, how old is that, that line? I thought that was relatively new.
North Avenue, California to Crestview?
Yeah, you have North Avenue, California to Crestview.
That is related to, we just got the emergency connection from the Riverside County, I'm not Riverside, City of Riverside, so with that connection, it's a 1,500 GPM connection, our pipeline is only a six. In order to get that much water and get the full, its benefits, I need to replace the line from north to California, California is a 10-inch line, so if I replace it with a 10-inch line, I can now get the full benefit of that water, which is cheaper than our other imported water sources. So, that was a desirable project, it doesn't mean we're gonna do it, for right now, it's an emergency connection, when we get the agreement for full-time water deliveries, the capacity's 1,500 GPM, at best, I'll be able to get 700 into our system because of our pipe constrictions, because they're put in a 10-inch line, we're going into a six, and then it finally gets to our 10-inch line down farther, so to really get that full capacity, it's a desirable project, that's why I put it several years out, it's not a critical one, and we'll evaluate when we get closer to that, but that's, that's the problem with the connection right now, it's just the restrictions.
Well, a couple of my concerns with that is, one here recently, we just finished all the improvements, California and north, and the other was, this is part of the trade-off with the City of Riverside to give up the nursery and the cemetery, correct? That we would then, they would then allow us that water connection?
I don't view it as a trade-off. It really wasn't one digit or the other. In staff's mind, it was, this was something, I was seeking to get water reliability.
But that's the same. That's where the source of that connection is, right? That's the point of connection?
Right, it's at that corner.
Correct. And the reason I use the word trade-off is because in previous reports, when you talked about that agreement with Riverside, that the revenues that we lost in water sales to the nursery and the cemetery would be offset by savings that we would incur in the future. So it was kind of a trade-off. It was going to be a, basically a push situation. And I remember that very well because I didn't support it. But now that, because I remember that very close, that those revenues, that loss of revenue is going to be offset by the savings.
I think, well, I think what we, if I recall correctly, what I said is not, it's offset by we having to purchase less imported water from Arlington to give those customers. So we're basically reducing our overall demand on Arlington.
Right. But no, we're in that conversation, when we had that conversation, did, did this come up and say, oh, by the way, we're going to need another $400,000 to make the connection all the way down to California Avenue?
I, again, I, for us.
We never have talked about that.
No, not one thing we ever have. Again, it was part of our evaluation. For me, I need the emergency connection because regardless of what my restrictions are, I needed the emergency connection. There was no other place to put it. So that is the point of connection regardless. What we determined in that whole process and design of it was that in order to effectively use it the best way possible, I need to increase our pipeline that goes from Arlington down to California in order to maximize. Otherwise, I will forever limit myself to just about 700 GPM, which we can. It just limits our ability to get as much water as we can at that particular price. And that's just a restriction that I can't eliminate because there's, I couldn't make them connect somewhere else. This is the connection point. Because that's where our two cities meet.
I guess that's my fault for not asking that question, that what's the next step? One thing always constitutes something else, but we never had the discussion that we're going to need another $400,000 once we made that deal.
And again, it's not something we, if it's the council's desire, we don't have to do it. It's just we're not using the connection to its full potential to benefit Norco.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the water projects? Go to sewer. So on the sewer, we're certainly going to start ramping up the work that we're planning on doing. A lot of it's related to lift stations. We're really going to spend time with hiring consultants to look at our lift stations as a whole. We have several that need to be upgraded, some that need to be replaced. A lot of them just need upgrades in the way how they operate. We're trying to move from above-ground to submersible pumps and their efficiencies that we've been doing the last couple of years. That's what we did with nine and 10, excuse me, not nine, 10, Valley View and the Corona Lift Station. So we've, most of these are those. We have a carryover project, which is the 27-inch main line that goes under the freeway from second to third. That line is currently, again, almost fully impacted with the amount of use that it gets. We really want to add a secondary line to go through there and also bigger line. But we need to get the design done. We didn't engage that this year. We're focused on a couple of other projects. So we're going to start that this year, engage a consultant. That's the original 250 that we're guestimating as far as to their cost to look at that project. It's going to be heavily involved with Caltrans, so it's going to be a long bureaucratic process as far as dealing with them. So unfortunately, I do not even have a clean guesstimate of what it would cost. So we've thrown in a number there. We thought hopefully it covers us, to be frank. So that's $250,000. And again, the placeholder for construction in future years, again, it's our guesstimate based off of what we need to be done or what it likely would cost. But again, we'll know more in those numbers we adjusted in future years. But we need to do that first year in doing the design. But then we have, we basically put placeholders for basic design. I expect when we go out with these, each of these projects, we're going to get bids that are going to be done cumulatively. So we're going to get some economies of scale. Even though I've indicated these individual numbers, I think overall, a lot of this money will not be included in the actual bids because through getting more work, they're going to, it's going to cost less. But that's why I see a lot of these numbers are the same. They're placeholders almost, this is my belief and what I've experienced, is that if I was doing individually, this is what it would cost. But if we do them as pairs or three or four at a time, based off the type of potential upgrade or it's a replacement type projects together, we'll get some efficiencies. So I think there'll be savings overall once we finally bring these to you to bid. But almost all these are all relation to our lift stations, which carry the sewage to the next, through, to the fourth main and out of the city on that first page. The second page, it, again, continuous gative improvements. Again, look at design. We looking at a new main on Shadow Canyon, 8-inch main line replacement. So we need to get the design done. And then we have, these are just some placeholders we have. Unspecified lift station rehab, realistically. We have from time to time, we've had major replacements or pumps that we had replaced. That's the only time we use this, those dollars. We do, definitely do year-to-year unspecified manhole rehabilitation. Terry's always definitely using that money for his issues with our manholes getting eaten up and destroyed in their normal wear and tear. And then unspecified sewer line extension. Sometimes, again, we get issues with customers where we were supposed to, or, excuse me, we have to fix their sewer because the plants, the trees destroyed it. Those are on us to repair when it's us. These are the funds we look to, to fix that segment of pipe. We hire TK and they come in, or CP where our online contractor, online, on-call contractor is, and we use those funds to do those as we need to do during the year. Versus, which is a different item, which is a different fund, one, I think it's 148, there's money there for sewer line extensions. That's mainly guided for when, as you know, we had all these sewer development districts where we put in main lines and put laterals to properties, et cetera. In some cases, the laterals didn't get put in, even though they should have. We use those monies to pay for that work that we do. We'll have a contractor put it in, take it to the property line, and then the resident does that. We haven't had one since I've been here, but that's mainly what they're there for. So the little difference as far as when we go in and do a lateral and which funds are used to do that, just so you're aware. And then we have RICRA, Recycled Water Capital Improvements. This is the estimate from RICRA as far as what they're going to bill us for site improvements for the next fiscal year. So that's directly from them. And then they, and to keep that in mind, they will only bill that for the project if it actually comes before and is awarded. So if they don't get it, they just won't ask for all that full amount of money. Any questions on any of those other projects?
I have a quick question. What's the lifespan on a lift station? Because like I see Oldenburg on here, and I feel like that neighborhood's relatively new. So what's the average lifespan on those?
Honestly, it depends on the wear and tear, its use. It depends how it was originally designed. There's a lot of factors that we look at. I mean, if it was designed very well, it should last no problem. Some of this, as far as upgrade, could simply be, again, going to submersible pumps, which are more efficient and effective to use for us than, than above-ground pumps. And so that's what we're going to look at to find out. And we look at all these, what improvements need to be done, so we, and what level are they required. And that's what we're going to come back and explain what we're doing and why, and the rationale. Because a lot of these, we're not looking to replace the station, we're just doing an upgrade.
So, well, in the, in the book, like for example, on 109 Old Hamner, you say you're going to change the lift station to a submersible pump. So that makes sense. But like Oldenburg Lift Station, for example, you have replace of current lift station. And that neighborhood up there isn't that old. So, does that mean that one's, so Oldenburg's on page 110, like the specifics on the full, yeah, document? Because you put, for the most part, explanations of everything. But, you know, if you tell me, it's typically, you know, 10 years or 12 years or whatever the case may be. But when I saw that one, for example, that's up in the hills, that's not old, in my opinion. So.
And you're absolutely right. Like I said, and we'll come back and make sure that we justify whatever we're proposing to do. And I apologize, I don't have all the details on all these. But I, again, we're not going to about to just do something cosmetically because we want to. It's going to have a reason for it. And I fully expect this council to grill me on that when it comes forward.
Okay. Well, can you answer a question then? Like Valley View and Corona, we just put those in. What's your expectation of lifetime on those then?
The pumps themselves, well, the station itself, the way it was built, if you continually do routine maintenance and upkeep, that's the key thing. Because you do get wear and tear on your tanks and equipment. So if you're in doing proper maintenance, at some point, I'd say at least 15 years in, you're going to at least do some sort of general repair, whether it's replacing your pumps entirely, any type of significant patching you may need to do on the internal tanks. Depends on the material they were done. Like I said, new material now. They're made to last quite a long time. If it's an old concrete tank, they don't last long. The gases inside there just eat it away. That's why a lot of our replacements, when it comes to manholes, they're done with epoxy coatings, et cetera, because they just handle the gases a little bit better than a concrete that was done in the past. There's too many pores in the concrete for it to get in and start just tearing away. So a lot of it's about maintaining it the right way. In general, your station should last you about 40 years. I mean, without, but if you maintain them right way, you do routine equipment replacement, your station itself should not need to be replaced, you know, in that regard, in my opinion.
Okay. So then on Oldenburg, there's some serious situation or a flaw then?
And that's what I'll verify. Yeah, I will verify that. I apologize for not having the specifics on that one.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
On all of these that you'll be going out, or you're going to be using consultants?
Correct.
And?
Working with staff to go to each site, evaluate it, staff identifying what are the actual concerns, so they can outline them for me, so we can look at and say, okay, do we really need to replace this? Does this have to be converted? Can this just be retrofitted? What are we doing here? What's the overall condition? And what are we trying to achieve? You know, I don't want to get into, well, I thought we could just replace it. No, if it's still usable and good, and it's, and it's good technology, this is what we should be doing.
Well, more of my question was that, you said that you're going to use consultants on this. Is this, you're going to go out to our preferred list of design engineers to bid, that you will bid this for the design?
Correct. Oh, absolutely. Yeah. Everybody will be submitting proposals.
Okay.
They're professional services, absolutely.
And then it'll be like you and Terry, let's say, going out and evaluating?
Yeah, staff would internally evaluate those proposals to find out experience. You know, certainly we're going to be asking for quite a bit of documentation of their experience with doing lift station upgrades, rehab, as replacements. We want to make sure who's doing that is, has experience, but is economically reasonable in what they're proposing to do.
Okay.
Because unfortunately, some of our contractors are a little bit, they're expensive.
Good ones are.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So this is that sewer connection, other fund, 148, basically, it's pretty much remained stagnant. This is where we go to put those laterals in, if and when we had not, we did not put a lateral in way back when that should have been in. This is what those funds will commonly be used for. And then we have street fund, 149. So on this one, we have our first line item, which is striping. This is just general money from then if we need striping, which is different than our striping contract, where we have just striping done all year long. We have various slurry seal locations. We didn't specify where they were because we're trying to determine where we're going to do this. We've determined, we started last year where we really focused on doing slurry seals to preserve the streets while they're still good. We want to continue this on a continuous basis every year, recognizing that the future years are going to be a lot less significant as far as cost. So we want to focus on about 150, 160,000 a year, and then find out where we can do those too. And we're currently looking at that as far as neighborhood areas that are fairly new, are the newest ones that we, that story seals were applicable. Again, we'll come back overall and say, here's, here's the projects that we propose, here's why, and here's the streets that we're going to do that for. But right now, we just listed it as various locations because we'd like to continue that type of treatment. It really benefits us overall to keep our, our good streets in a good condition. So Hamner Avenue Widening, Third Street to Fifth Street, that's a carryover project from this year. It was already awarded to a contractor. They're likely going to start at the end of this month or early July. Those are all Tump-funded, it's a Tump-funded project. And again, that was already awarded, and that's upgraded a couple of those properties, about nine of them along Hamner between Third and Fifth. Yes, sir?
That'll get rid of those places along the street that hang out into the lanes, right?
It'll get to a couple of them. Some of them were, some of the properties weren't willing to give us the dedications required. So those, certain properties will not be done.
Okay. What about down this end by J&amp;M Towing and everything? Is all that going to be removed and widened down through there?
Between, except for the corner where the restaurant is and the auto place, those are not being widened because we couldn't get those dedications. But everything south of there is, that we got those dedications. All that will be widened and cleaned up.
Well, I thought they had that years ago, that dedication, because the way it was set up, you're going to walk out of that restaurant door right into a car.
Yeah, but like I said, we don't have the dedication. We've met with the property owner and their representatives, and unfortunately, they were not interested in providing those dedications.
Okay, well, that is some more lawn fertilizer that we were fed one time.
I'm sure they would entertain that idea. My ability in that discussion was limited in that there was no money from Tump to do that. So my discussions never got to a dollar amount or figure. What we focused on was the savings for them as a property if the city did the work, you know, because they'd have to do the widening themselves that they developed. They'd have to change the intersection and the signals at that Fifth and Hamner, which is a substantial cost. So if we did it on their behalf, those improvements would already be done, and I, and we view it as a benefit to the property. They didn't, which is okay, I understand. But we tried to emphasize the importance of the project that way, plus it also provides safety once it's widened. And we accommodated them in the design that we did, because we did a full design so they could see it. They didn't lose any parking. It was a safe process, sidewalk in front of them. They weren't, you're not walking out the door and you're in the street. It actually looked very nice. It's just something they just didn't want to move forward with.
You had said these on Hamner when Berwin mentioned J&amp;M, that that's Tump fees. So I guess note to Gina, if you and your staff, would you give a little report, just later, written report, J&amp;M Towing paid cash and lieu fees for those improvements. It's been longer than 20 years. That money's been sitting in cash and lieu accounts. So if you could just.
That is at a local bank somewhere.
Yeah, I mean, it goes back to Jim Daniels days. So, but I think, well, at least for myself and maybe all of us, how will that be transferred around and how that, that moves?
We'll get that back to you.
Thank you.
So the next project is a continuation project, which is Second Street on the right-hand turnpocket onto the I-15. Again, as you know, we've worked on it for quite a while. Keep creeping closer through Caltrans, hoping sometime in July that maybe they actually can give me the green light. But we're waiting on them. But again, it's a, it's a project I'm really hoping for. That we actually get a construction this next year, but we'll see. Then we have Second Street Sidewalk Project, northbound. This is actually not a new project per se, but it's new and it wasn't listed previously in last year's budget item. We added it in your mid-year budget this year. You guys approved that project because it included $250,000 grant from Caltrans, which we did get that money already. So this is the care. So this is the carryover funds. They are basically, just so you understand, they're, they're projected to finish that work, our portion of the work, which is the sidewalk portion, probably by, by the end of June, early July, but it's not going to be 100% finished because the pole that they're supposed to put in is not going to get here till about September. So that's all on there waiting in the queue for that pole. So we're holding X amount that we're not going to pay them, obviously, for the project because the pole and that work hasn't been done. But majority of the work will be set up and billed by June. This is carryover dollars that we expect to, at some points, expand in the first quarter. But they, what they're, so you understand, is when they're done with that project, including the off-ramp, which I believe is supposed to be done with the off-ramp project by the end of July, it'll all be open, there'll be a existing pole there placed in temporary status, and then they'll take the old pole when it comes in and put the new one in. But everything will be up and running, sidewalk will be able to use, et cetera. There will be nothing impeding pedestrians or vehicles, so that'll be, that won't be waiting for that to be reopened until, until September. Then we have the Sixth Street, I-15, again, right turn pocket, just in that beginning processes with, with Caltrans, we're on our second submittal with them. Again, we'll see how that goes in relation to get anywhere. Hamner Avenue, again, this is Third Street to Hidden Valley. I have two funding sources for that, as you mentioned before, I had SB1, but I also have this funding here. It's been estimated to be almost $900 million bucks to do all that paving. So that's why I have two sources for funding and part of that use. Then I have Vine Street, Coridon to Bronco, excuse me, from Coridon to Bronco, Driftwood to Half Moon. This is that project we pulled out from the water project, and now we're ready to go back to it. That project's already basically been designed, we're getting ready to go back out to bid to get that finished for those residents there. And we, we do appreciate their patience on that. And then we have reconstruction, we have Delmar between Coridon and Avenue Kipps Corner. That's a new project. Then we have the traffic signals, that project, two projects, which is the dual left-hand turns off Hamner from Second and also to Sixth. Those are in combination with the right turn projects. Those are again, placeholders again, until we get the funding, the go-ahead from Caltrans, but once we do, those are fundings for that specific portion of work that needs to be done. There may be, just so you know, and we're already aware of it, depending on project timing, the money that is for the traffic signal, Hamner to Second Street, $200,000, since I already have funding expected between Hamner, excuse me, Hidden Valley and Third, that whole section, if I go forward with that first, that will include those improvements that would likely be needed for the left turn lane, and then these funds would not end up being used. Because it's, it's a question of making sure in the end, I don't repeat a process, and then you're questioning me, why on earth did we do this? So they are, I do recognize that's in the same sphere of influence, we're not going to be doing it twice. But it, it's literally just separate projects for that purpose, though, because they originally started as separate projects. But I want to make sure, whether I'm keenly aware of, that's kind of a double dip there. In the end, what I'm trying to do is get them both at the same time, so it gets all done at once. But I can't really put in those improvements on Hamner if the improvement on Second Street isn't done. That's my logistical problem. Otherwise, I have to go to the potential of putting in dual-lane lanes and basically blocking the, the one lane out, and have to come back and stripe it later, which is not a bad thing, it just creates a little bit of confusion for folks. But that's one way of ensuring that the ultimate striping is already done, pavement's already done, et cetera. And myself and the city engineer are looking at that, figuring it out. If Second Street's not ready, how do we want to finish this so it's just all done? Okay, and then the last one there is the residential street sign replacement. This is the phase three of our sign replacement, now getting into the residential signs, putting the new poles up, or adding poles that simply don't exist, putting the cross signs, new residential street signs up so that people know where they're at. A lot of them are faded, fallen down, broken off. So now this is going back and finally putting those signs up, since we've already done the overhead signs, or finishing the overhead signs now through the city. This is that, that third and final phase that we're looking at trying to complete.
I have a quick question. Delmar, reconstruct. That street currently has speed bumps. As per what we've passed, is it correct that those will not be replaced?
They won't.
Okay. On Delmar? So then we get to take the heat over that after that happens? Is that's what we said, gosh, less than a year ago, I feel like, or maybe a year?
A year and a half ago.
So?
Yeah, it was at the time that if, when any street that has existing speed humps, when a street gets redone, those speed humps would not be put back in, because you remove them to do that work, but they would not be put back in.
I think we need to relook at this because I know public safety's opinion on it, but those speed bumps were put in for a specific reason, and that's because a kid got killed there, right? If you remember? And we're going to take a tremendous amount of heat if you reconstruct that street and there isn't speed tables or speed humps put back in. I'd almost tell you, don't do the street and strike it out, because we'll, we'll take a beating if they don't go back in.
Yeah, how do they, how do you get by without putting them back in? They've been there for over 25 years, I don't know.
Because as part of the ordinance that the city council elected to adopt, it put a ban on speed humps, speed tables, and in that discussion, in, in that review was that if any, any of these existing, because there was only two at the time, I believe it was Cora, is it Corona?
Corona has speed tables.
Speed tables, and then Delmar. And I think the only one, the recent that you allowed in was the recent construction on Sundance. And we basically indicated that in the future, any road replacement would eliminate putting the speed humps back in, or speed tables back in, whatever was existing. Because again, we're, we're redoing the road, putting in compliance at, which is now the current standard, which is no speed humps, speed tables. That's why we wouldn't put it back in, because it's not currently allowed.
Unlike Greg, we're going to catch a lot of devil over that one, so.
Well, just to clarify, you, we, we catch the devil already because we won't put them in other places, and, and they got them, or they got them. So I think regardless, you're going to get the grief because other people want them because other people have them. So I think either way, we'll certainly get the grief. But I understand that those residents themselves will be probably very upset, and then not realizing that that is something that's going to occur.
It's going to be more than upset. So for the lieutenant and the chief, that, and I don't know if there's any way that maybe you could help us with this, in past history, those speed bumps have been there, let's say, 25 years?
At least.
Okay. At, at any point for a call for service, has those, those specific speed bumps on Delmar delayed a response time? I mean, is that, I mean, could you even?
For law, it's not an issue. The speed humps aren't an issue for us. They don't delay us. Our vehicles are not nearly the size of the fire trucks, so they, they can absorb a lot more impact with the speed going over them.
I've only been here at Norco a year. I would definitely want to gather, before making a decision either way, I would want to gather more information. As the LTs said, the, the fire engines are heavy fire apparatus that we have to slow down, or we would have, we would create other challenges for ourselves, and the fire engine, as far as damage to the vehicle, gear coming off the engine. So there's a whole lot of items. We can definitely, through our CAD, run some drills and put in, it's going to take some staff work, but in my, in this particular case, I think well worth it, that we, we come up with an informed decision, because we, we have to live with, with the decision we make. And if we, whether we take them out, leave them in, I would want to make sure we have everything on the table so we make a good, informed decision. If the speed bumps are in, as we know, there potentially could be a delay in response. So it's the, the level of service we want to ensure we provide, and, and our line of work, response times is everything. And we want to make sure we don't leave anything on the table that wasn't gone through and vetted out.
No, I appreciate that, chief, and maybe we could look at a modification of those two, where we cut wheelbase open or something like that, if we had to reconstruct this street. So I think we'd all be open to new and better ideas, but I agree with the mayor and Berwin that we're going to take a beating bad.
If I can interject, chief, because neither one of you guys were here, the recommendation of that ordinance when we did remove them was based upon the recommendation from CalFire, or the Fire, Riverside County Fire Chief, that they would not support the application or putting in any speed tables, speed bumps, speed humps, whatever else you want to call them. That was the recommendation of your, your chief at the time. So that is what we, why we did it. And basically, they would not approve of them, and they were the chief safety officers for us. So this is going to go probably back to your administrators as their application, instead of making a blanket thing that they would not support it. So I guess it's going to go back to see what your new chief says, because that was under the old guy. So, and that might be something that, Andy, you would want to look to as far as what are the, and I know because we have dips and things like that, people use as set up speed bumps. So before you get into just because of one specific street, we did it because of a blanket statement made by CalFire and Riverside County Fire, is why we did what we did. So that's a little history on that. So I hate to say just use one street, yeah, we haven't had any problems. Well, yeah. But at the same time, that's why we did the ordinance.
The motion that we put Ted's cell number on this particular. We do want to approve spikes. That's what you want, is spike strips.
Don't want them flying down the hills so they don't end up down in your guys' neighborhoods.
And with that, any more questions?
I don't have one specifically for Chad, but maybe Gina and Andy. We looked through all this, and maybe it's going to come up on all our funding sources for all these projects. I saw Measure A, I saw Tump funds, I saw DIF funds, I saw every kinds of funds. I didn't see any measure, mention of Measure R funds for any of these projects.
Projects will be coming back to you when the Citizens Oversight Committee has finished their, their job on that.
Okay, I'm, I'm just, I'm asking because I didn't see it, and that's, I saw one here on ADA, one of the little handouts we got, Measure R capital funds regarding citywide ADA assessment. That's why I ask, is there more?
Yeah, initially, we, we, we thought about having, having, with the hope that their job was completed, but they are still working on, on the projects. And hopefully, we'll bring this back to you, your first bidding in August is what we are hoping for.
Okay, so then by then, we'll have all their input minutes and?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Really quickly, does the city clerk have any cards on this topic?
Yes, we have one card, Bill Naylor.
First of all, I'd like to congratulate you guys on all the work you were doing on your budget. I've listened to almost every bit of it, and I think you guys have approached a lot of good projects that need to be taken care of. Couple of things, again, thanks, Greg, for reminding staff about the volunteers that can do things with the city to, to help save city funds and/or materials for future use. The other thing that I would like to mention is, you guys at the previous meeting had talked about possibly reducing funds or restoring funds to the planning department for code enforcement, concerned that you might need some additional funds for the city prosecutor or different things. I'd also like to throw something out at you that would be under a capital project for that particular program. As most of you know, I used to do code enforcement for a number of years for another city. And I was able to very effectively use staff time by having a computer program that would allow scheduling of my appointments, inspections, writing letters, because if I can go through with a computer program and say, okay, I'm at this site, I, these are the problems I see, da-da-da, da-da-da, put it into the computer, the computer will actually generate a lot of the letters and things that need to be done. And I've talked to staff a little bit, and it, it sounds like they're still doing it the old way with just writing notes and doing that, and coming back and having to type the letters and things like that. So I just wanted you to think in terms of maybe you might want to do some checking with other cities to see what types of programs that they are using, because I know, was I, when I was leaving, there was actually some new programs coming out where you could actually be in the field with your, with your iPad or whatever, do it, and by the time you got back to the office, your letters and everything would almost be ready to go, just sign them and off they go. It'd be much more efficient, and it is a cost, and your IT people would have to help you with that, but I think it's something to, to really look into, whether you do it right away or within the next year. I think it's a good, a project to look at. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I can answer that. It's actually in the budgets, in the community development portion of the budget. Steve's been working on that for the last year and looking at various programs, and we have selected one which will also merge with our financial system. And everything that Bill just articulated is part of that program, which includes code
Thank you. All right, so we will bring it back for council discussion and direction, which I think we've done, according to the council, like, our only change at this point is the fire station, correct?
That was to change, change the fire improvement projects from a total budget of $280,000 to $220,000. They'll change, that line item being changed, fire station number 57 improvements, reducing that from 120 to 60,000.
Ted's going to, just, just regarding the doors, the overhead doors, and, and for staff to work with CalFire.
Can I add something?
We'll take a look at Station 17, because I know that's one that he all looked at, and we'll work with them on whatever that will be.
It's in beautiful downtown Rubado.
I know by ordinance that we, we said if we wouldn't put speed bumps in, but I, I think we ought to leave those in. That's, it's one location, and why not just leave them in? Because people are used to them. Rather than make a big deal of, you know, having the fire department having to do a big, we know we're not going to put them in any other place, but maybe just leave them in in that location, because people have come to expect them.
I'm just wondering what action of council that would take, because we'd be going against an ordinance that we passed. So just want to make sure that's the pleasure of council, that it's done legally and correctly. Of the ordinance, yeah, that's what I figure.
And why we, you know, we had the ordinance, and unfortunately, none of us are engineers or safety engineers or traffic engineers or are safety personnel. And there comes a point where we have to defer to the quote, experts that put their little seal on those for the liability if something was.
That goes without saying, I mean, I.
I mean, I, I understand what you're saying. I, I agree with you. But it was something that was based upon our safety personnel's recommendations, why we made that ordinance. And I think we have to stay consistent in the city.
That was also the recommendation of the city engineer, not just the fire department, clearly. City engineer was.
I just thought I'd bring it up. I think that it's been there for 25 years, and, but it's up to you guys.
Well, that's, it would have to be brought up under other items at the end of a regular council meeting to be agendized, correct? Okay.
I'd like to say that, I mean, I agree with Councilmember Bash, but since the chief opened it up, that I think it would be better to further study this. Maybe things have changed, maybe certain directions, there's a There's a lot of other cities out there that have speed tables, traffic calming, speed bumps, whatever, with no impacts to public safety and response times. We don't want to increase response times, I get it, but maybe there's another way and other people to talk to with other ideas, because that's not the only street we need help on. So if, if the chief is willing, I'd like to stay with that original discussion of, let's study it, and then, but we can talk about, as the mayor said, under other matters.
Yeah, just ask for it to be agendized, and we'll take care of it that way.
I was just typing a note to Chief Lane, so we'll have a follow-up item to make sure we have all of the information that's available, and we can help provide some good info on an informed decision.
Perfect. All right, so anything else under council discussion?
Just one clarification, and only because we've been getting changes to our general fund budget. Are we going to go, we're going to have to finally approve all this stuff eventually, tonight, later on, so I can say, I'll say my questions for them. Thank you.
Nothing else? All right, this meeting is adjourned at 5:50.